There's a consideration of a consent agenda with the payroll warrant. And then amend the minutes to add June 20th, 2018 draft minutes to the consent agenda. And then the next meeting is set for tomorrow night if needed. And then July 25th at 7:00 PM. The next item is consideration of financial matters. We need to amend the agenda to remove the enhancements to the senior tax program. And then continue with end of year reserve fund transfers, joint meeting with the advisory committee, Sharon McPherson, finance director and town accountant. And then an update from Sharon. And then consideration of land use and development matters with an introduction of potential development and related utility concerns at 41 North Main Street with Andrew Consigli. And then town campus site plan update and maybe finalize the plan with Sean Colleen, CM and D director, facilities manager. And I know that it's not, it's not going to be finalized tonight. And then review applicants and consider appointments to the conservation commission. There's two seats. Terms to expire June 15th, 2021, and there are three applicants, Courtney X., Cindy Ostrowski, and Peter Liffington. Then routine business, town administrator reports, selectmen reports, and adjourn.
Could I make a minor technical amendment? Where it's the agenda item, end of year reserve fund transfers, that should read end of year transfers. I don't think we, the intent was to limit ourselves to reserve fund transfers, but to make transfers between accounts.
Terrific.
I'll make the motion to approve as amended.
Second. All in favor? Terrific. Moving on to the consent agenda, I had several typos on the June 20th minutes. None of them are substantive. I can walk the board through them, but they really are minor.
Can I just move to approve with your amendments? I don't think we need to walk through.
It's fine. I trust your proofreading, Chuck.
I'll second Paul's.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Terrific. Item two on the agenda is the consideration of financial operational matters in a joint meeting with the advisory committee.
Dr. Back in a moment, I'm going to call the advisory committee meeting.
Terrific. We are going to consider the enhancements to the senior tax program at a future meeting. So the first item is the end of year fund transfers. Sharon, you want to walk us through?
Sure. I have a more concise version. I had sent everybody that humongous spreadsheet, and I know it was kind of hard to follow. So basically what's happening is we need to transfer $285,014.56 to cover a variety of departments that we're, that we're running over. I, do you want me to give you a little explanation of each one?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay, okay. All right. So the first transfer is to the selectmen's department. We're transferring $53,850.30. The reason why is that, actually, that department was running under budget. However, they, we decided to transfer any additional cost that the town incurred on behalf of the library construction project. And there was about $89,000 that we incurred this year. So this is to cover that.
Part of that was the performance bond?
Yes, the performance bond, Whitewater.
Engineering with the well, I think, is that?
Yeah, between there and town buildings.
So Sharon, just, so, so we understand, so it's, it's an $89,000 transfer?
It's really, no, it's only, we only have to transfer 53,000.
Fifty-three.
Because.
And, and so there was a surplus, and now, now it's being wiped out?
Yes.
Okay, by the library.
Mm-hmm.
Got it.
So we were running a surplus of about $45,000?
Um, yeah.
That's what it looks like.
Yes.
Thirty-six thousand.
Yes, yes.
Let's do thirty-six thousand, I think, eighty-nine minus fifty-three.
And so just real quick back, so the library expenses, those are non-construction costs?
Yes.
Non-construction.
Right.
I like the way it's said.
They're like the Whitewater, and then the Hartford, which is the builder's risk insurance, which we had to renew.
Unless advisory or other members of the select board want to, I'd like to go to the town council, the next three items for the, are all under $10,000.
Okay. Town council is legal fees, and I actually am not privy to the, the details.
I think, well, we budgeted only the eighty thousand for that.
Exactly.
And we typically have this at the end of the year. I think this is actually lower than we typically are spending.
Yeah, you're right.
If I, if I remember the numbers correctly.
Yes, yes.
I think we've usually, we've, we've been around 200,000 in most years recently, and this was 144,000 this year.
Yeah, yep, you're right.
And a lot of this is for 40B advice, 40B projects?
Does this include the library council expenses?
Yeah, and there were a couple of suits, or not suits, but land court issues that were wrapped up in that town.
Great, yeah, I don't want to go into great detail, but I just want to describe it generically. Any questions from advisory before we go on to town building?
Okay. Town building is 53,911.51. And basically, it's, you know, years of neglect. And Sean, do you want to speak to this a little bit?
Town building?
Yeah.
We already covered it. Town buildings, and most of the deficit is the library. We covered all the well expenses, we covered repairs of the well, we covered.
So these are the actual well repairs, whereas the Whitewater expenses were in the...
Consultants, yeah.
Under the town buildings, there were certain repairs that we would have been doing to the well anyway.
Okay.
And then there are others that were impromptu because of the library.
Correct.
And so somewhere there would be a total of these non-construction costs. Part of it was getting jammed into the selectmen, part of it was getting put into the town.
Yeah, should we move them all into the selectmen?
I mean, the, the alternative is to, to just do one transfer out of the reserve fund and clean those out of the accounts that are there, but...
I just want to make sure that for the future, we have, we have a total of what that...
Okay, I can identify, I'll work with Sean.
Yeah, she has them.
Yeah, yeah.
Separated inside that budget from service points to 40,000 in one place.
So I'm a little, little confused, I just want to make sure there's no double counting. You've said that Whitewater's come out of the selectmen budget, but Whitewater's also come out of the building budget, so...
Whitewater would not have come out of the selectmen budget.
Okay, so that was misspoken.
There are some, there is some, unless it was a consulting from Whitewater.
Yeah, though it was, it was consulting from Whitewater that was, that got charged to the selectmen.
All right, and Sean just said consulting from Whitewater went into the building budget. I just want to make sure we're very clear with the public on where these funds are.
If it's construction and well building related, it's in the town buildings. But if it was expertise we needed for, for something, then it would be...
For the DEP or other...
Yeah, this is all...
Right. That's a selectmen expense, okay. Thank you.
So, sorry, I follow up from advisory. So the costs that are being put into town building that come from this particular, the well issue and the well repairs resulting from these, will you be able to get what that number is? Because effectively, it looks like, you know, the town's going to spend more this year than they necessarily would in a normal year, which could affect the budget going forward.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I can get that to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay.
Will we open more questions?
Oh, sure.
So, 89,000 from the selectmen, and then all of the 54,000 from the town building is library, library group.
Sean, would you say that it's all, that whole 54,000 is library?
So it's 142,000 that is a running total for...
I don't see any, no.
That was the number Sharon said.
Was that the selectmen's?
Yeah, that was in the selectmen.
It's in the selectmen, it's in the 53.
Yeah.
One guy was like, what's the difference?
Right, because we were...
We had a surplus.
We had a surplus of 89,000.
Forty-five.
Yeah, surplus of...
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand, right, covers the delta, thank you.
In town buildings, there's more than 53,000 that contribute directly to...
Okay, all right, then we'll, we'll do a close accounting of it and share that way.
An excessive, though.
Okay.
Just for planning in future years, I just want to make sure we...
Okay, yeah.
To correctly track.
And when we look at the budget at the end of the year, the rolling, there's a separate line item pushed out to begin with, inside that budget.
Okay.
Which would, you know, be the anomaly.
Okay, yeah, okay, I'll share that.
So is that 142,000 low, or...
Yeah, he's saying it's low. He's saying of the 53,900 that needs to be sent over now, he's saying there's actually more than that that's eaten up by this series of non-constructional effort.
And then was any of the, wasn't it about 54,000 that was transferred previously? Or was that a C and D, that was the issue? But is that net?
Uh, let's see.
Supplemental.
You should speak louder so that...
I don't think anyone heard, could you repeat that?
I thought that was another, it was about roughly 54,000 dollars, something like that, for earlier on the year.
We should set the advisory altogether, and it would just make more sense.
Right.
Is that also a library cost?
Yes, that is included. I mean...
That was in CM and D, correct?
Yeah, yeah, it's not in building, it's in CM and D. 305.
Haven't gotten there yet.
Terrific, let's, CM and D, I think I know where a lot of that is coming from.
Before you jump to that?
I'm sorry.
I wanted to know, I was just curious why, on the other side of the table, the fire department budget had $92,000 of excess out, like, why did, why did we budget so high on salaries and then not?
It was for the ambulance, and it's all in a revolving fund, and we didn't need...
So we paid out of the revolving fund instead of...
Right.
Yeah, actually, I'd like to deal with the transfer from as a separate group.
Oh, okay.
So, rather than doing them piecemeal.
Another problem I just got.
So let's, let's do the next large transfer too, which is a CM and D budget of about 70,000.
Okay, and I just want to let you know that that is another anomaly. There, this year, we spent about $38,000 on fuel for fire and police, and it all got charged to CM and D. So we need to, we need to move that around. And going forward, that, going forward, that's how Sean's going to budget, though. He's going to, he's going to keep everything in his department, instead of, you know, charging it out. He'll be able to keep track of it.
Previously, we were doing like a quarterly transfer, and then figure out the gallons for price, and, and actually transfer it over to the police and fire. But it was messy, it wasn't all that accurate.
Yeah.
Versus keeping it all in one place. If anyone, it's still tracked inside the fuel software, if you want to know how many gallons of per unit we have there. But to push the dollars into two different budgets wasn't really accurately accounting.
Okay, that makes sense.
So for 2019, Sean, is that taking into account, is that fuel taking into account?
All the fuel will be in CM and D.
Okay, and therefore should be out of fire and police.
I think I remember talking about that during the budget process, that we changed that around for next year.
So by deep end of the year now, when we look back at 18, they'll already be there. From making a two-year transfer out.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So Sharon, is this, this is a 238 expense item variance, I mean variance item? Is it 238? All right, and you're, you're saying how much of that is fuel?
38,000.
All right, so what's the other 200?
Wait, I'm sorry, what are you saying?
238,000, if you look at the expense variance for CM and D.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay.
Is that snow plow, uh, snow removal?
Snow and ice is in there, but it's, of course, we covered it.
Yep.
So that's part of the 238?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Well, no, but the budget, no...
No, because we had supplementals.
Yeah, the budget was increased to cover the cost of snow and ice.
What's the addition of the additional 200,000 then?
The 251?
No, the 238. See how there's a variance in expenses of 238,000?
Yeah.
But, let me ask you a question, because it looks like since in his salaries line item, we did a transfer in of 251,000, which is probably for the snow and ice, but then it's showing up on the, like, he has a large variance on salaries, large positive variance on salaries and a large negative on expenses.
Yeah, okay, I think, I've got to move it around. Yeah, I think in total, it's right, but...
And is some of that variance, cost of police details, that, that goes in that expense line item, right?
I mean, I can, I've got a detail of every single line item that's in CM and D.
It's a pretty significant variance, so just for budgeting purposes for the next year, we ought to know what's in it, and if it's real or not real, or numbers need to be moved around. That's a big number.
Yeah, but the net, the net is only, well, the net's only 69,000, and I think you're right, I got to, I was only, I was only looking at...
Look and see which is expenses and which is salary.
Yeah.
Okay.
You may find that snow power, and Sean might go to speak, this, you know, this provides contracted services and in-house, maybe the in-house and contracted differ, you see. So I think you might be more...
It's not split out right here to read it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're looking at numbers that aren't what you think they are.
Yeah, exactly.
That wasn't 250,000 over on salaries.
No. Yeah, I was just looking at, I was very focused on the bottom line.
It's over, but that's inside of the...
Yeah.
No, it actually looks like you're, it looks like you're under on salaries.
Yeah.
Yeah, you were way under on salaries, but way over on expenses.
Yes, I mean, we should be looking at, we should be able to look at numbers that actually, we can understand what they mean, not that we don't understand what they mean, so...
Was the annual town meeting transfer, the other number, the snow and transfer, you know, 50,000 in?
No, it was 251 for...
Snow and ice.
251 for snow and ice, and 54 was that other supplemental we were just talking about.
We're transferring, that's last year's number.
Yeah, I think next, next year for budget season, I, we should look very carefully at these variances to figure out whether or not we can...
Absolutely.
...avoid them, more accurately budget them.
Yeah, I can, I can take a look at this, the, the annual town meeting transfers and make sure it gets in the right bucket, and then resend this out. But that's, but the, the bottom line is the trans, the total transfer is not going to change.
That, that is the bottom line, but from a budgeting standpoint, when you have two numbers that are, one of which is more than 50% of the budget, and it's a negative variance, and the other of which is like a 30% positive variance, there's something wrong with the budgeting or the reporting, one or the other.
It's, yeah, and it's not the budgeting, it's, it's the, it's how that 251,000 was allocated, so I have to, I have to take a look at that and move it.
We need to pin that down.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, let's move on to where the transfers are coming from.
The transfer, what about the transfer station, because that's...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, there's a 26,000 transfer to the transfer station. I think it's because of the increased cost in recycling. It's now a negative number. It used to be a positive number.
Yes, exactly.
When some of us were on the recycling committee, I don't...
Yeah, no, that's exactly right.
In foreseeable, that's not going to decrease. In the long term, due to, you know, China and what have you, taking from 20% down to half a percent of what the contamination, we can, we should budget in the foreseeable future, at least, I don't know, what do we pay, 50, 60 dollars a ton?
Sean?
Sean? We, we did increase the budget for next year significantly for the recycle, because of the recycle costs.
In the long term, it's, it's too bad too, because all communities are facing this in the long term. It literally went from, you know, they'd pay you for recyclables, to now it almost costs more than actual trash.
That's right.
And it will, and it will be for the foreseeable future. And the DEP's not going to actually, you know, lay off the requirement for recycling for sanitation, so in the foreseeable future, we can actually expect this type of costs.
We try to capture it, but it's a little retarded.
It is?
Even the, the most informed people in that industry have no idea.
You can only expect it to go up, yep. And then Milford actually got rid of their recycling bottling, and that, that makes it even higher, yeah.
Terrific, Sharon, why don't you walk through the three budgets that had overages where the 285,000 is being transferred from?
Okay, so fire had budgeted for ambulance salaries, I think I already mentioned this, and they're paid for out of the revolving fund, so that was a mistake, or oversight. Library, because of the, the project was delayed, they didn't incur, you know, some additional expenses that they had anticipated, and they're, but their budget's running lower because they're not in the, in the building, so they handed back 52,000.
And a good chunk of that was salary, right? Because they're not, they delayed the...
Yeah, I think it's...
It was the new positions that were...
Yeah, 35 of salaries, yeah, and 17 of expenses. Mm-hmm.
So book lining.
Okay.
And employee benefits?
That was actually, it was health insurance, and it's just because of the, when the, when the new rates came out and people enrolled, it was different than we had projected, so we knew that this was going to be happening, the 151.
And is that, is that a sustainable number, or is it just random?
No, it's our, yeah, no, our budget for next year is based on our current enrollment and, and how it's, you know, family and individual, so we, and we'll, and we'll continue to track that.
Okay, great.
So that wasn't necessarily due to any change that counted towards benefits such that we sent about a few...
No.
They, they just have.
It just, yeah, it's just...
We got lucky.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Terrific. The other thing, there was, there's other line items, as we saw in the front of the spreadsheet, there's other line items that were also had positive variances, which means there's, there was like a 600, $760,000 total positive variance.
Yes, yes.
Of that 90,000's at the regional school, which they don't have to turn it back because they have their E and D. But a big number in there that I just wanted to discuss was the debt service had a positive variance of 275,000, which I, I was really surprised by that, because I would think we would be able to plan for that number and know what it should be.
Yeah.
That was before, I know it was before, before the current staff, but I think it was...
My guess is we didn't place the debt, remember how you did the debt in April? I don't, my guess is we didn't place the debt as quickly as we thought we would. We were still doing the short term, is that, Heidi, I don't know if I'm misstating that or not.
There was...
I don't want to make a misstatement on that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it was a little, a little confusing.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a good, it's a good variance to have, but at the same time, I'm just curious how we were off by that far.
Debt service included, is it short-term borrowing, or is it just a long-term borrowing?
It's both.
It's both.
It's all, yeah.
Right.
Okay, I'm not sure then.
No, some of it was because we had a premium on the bond.
Yeah.
And that, that was 361,000.
And that's probably a large piece of it.
Oh, okay.
That was something that... Which adjusts the rates, really.
Yeah.
Ah, that makes sense then, okay. And then obviously, the good news is we don't have to spend any of the 263,000 that we have left in the reserve fund.
Nope.
So that's all getting turned back down as well.
Can I go back, George, to the regional schools, though? They're right at the max of the excess deficiency. We had a somewhat raucous meeting with them.
Multiple times.
So they're right at, what is it, 6%, I think is the maximum.
Five.
5% is the maximum they can hold. They're right at the threshold, and that's before this 90,000, so...
So you guys are from a...
They actually spent down some of it, John.
Have they?
Yeah, and they had, to those budget gap. They, they planned to spend some of that into fiscal '19.
A budget gap in the current, not fiscal '19 budget. Well, this is showing the $90,000 turn back from fiscal year 2019.
So I mean...
From '18, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, they're turning back 98 from '18.
So you guys, from advisory standpoint, will you ask them to turn it back to the town, rather than keeping it in their E and D, or...
You know, if they, so we've had some of those discussions with them, with the regional school committee, and certainly, you know, by law, they have to turn back anything that's above 5%.
Mm-hmm.
So, and we've seen that, this seems to be a cycle, every couple of years, they end up with a excess that they need to turn back to the town. So we're aware of that and take that into account as we go forward into budget season. It's finding places to stuff the excess.
What was that?
It's like loose Hannah Apple in the chocolate factory.
Terrific.
Well, we did ask those to break, to consider breaking down.
And, and fiscal, fiscal year 2019, their, their plan is to draw down off their 5% in axle, or they had then, down towards 4.1% of maybe the year calculation in their fiscal year 2019 budget. So they do plan to draw down some of that.
So this requires a vote of both boards to approve it. I assume it does not have to be a roll call vote. Herbie?
No, and they're separate votes.
And they're separate votes, right.
They vote ours, they vote theirs, and hopefully they, we all vote the same thing.
Do we want to be guided by advisory, or you let them go first?
You got some spot? So for advisory, any further comment, questions for the discussion?
Is it easy?
Any further discussion, or are we good for...
I'm good.
Any motion to accept the proposed transfers, that's the stuff?
Probably.
Second? All in favor?
And I'll move from the select board to transfer 285,014.56 from the departments as listed on this spreadsheet, to the departments as listed on the spreadsheet.
Second. Any further discussion?
I just have a, a question. Even though all these numbers are on here, these school budgets are not in our control, right?
Correct. I mean, well, Pine Hill has to turn back any excess to the town. They don't have an excess in deficiency, but the regional school is their own entity, so they're allowed to keep up to 5%.
So that was a hypothetical discussion before?
Yeah, it was just a matter of saying...
Typical lawyer, he's asking a question.
Because if you look at that bottom line number, Mike, that says 760,971...
I was thinking we would just apply the 90,000 to, instead of one of these, but...
We, I don't think we could.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Terrific.
Okay, and so my takeaway is I am going to get a clean breakout, work with Sean on any library costs, and then I'm also going to take a look at CM and D and make sure we get the salaries and expenses line.
But that's follow-up, I mean...
Yeah, yeah. Follow-up, okay.
Thank you, Sharon, great. Great work putting this all together.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
I like it big like this, so we can read it, that's really nice, Sharon.
I know.
I learned a better way to read it.
It was either that or magnifying glass, it was better.
Just two little headers, that's select board, not selectmen anymore.
Okay, absolutely, yeah.
And town council, SEL, not council, CA.
Okay, I was working fast.[1574.12] I was working fast. Okay.
Terrific, then, next item on the agenda, you guys want to?
Uh, we're open to stick around, I think I was doing the, the vote to forty-one north.
Yeah.
Go back to stick around for that, and then we will probably continue ourselves through the presentation for some of the questions.
Terrific. We have one intervening item, which is a financial update from Sharon. I suspect that the only other thing you want to add to this is the, the year-end total.
Um, the year-end total, I'm, oh, I've, actually, I had just given you something on library, and we really haven't incurred any significant additional expenses. So I just wanted to point out that, you know, to date, we have incurred four million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand in expenses. And we're at fifty-four percent in terms of our budget. But again, the, the burn rate is, is much lower than, than was actually originally forecasted, so I don't, I don't have anything else to report on that.
There's certainly been a lot more activity, but I'm assuming there's.
There has.
Invoicing is thirty to sixty days trailing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wait, I don't have any invoices as of today. Everything's been processed, everything is included in this. So I would assume we're going to be getting one shortly, because you're right, there has been a lot of activity.
Terrific, thanks, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Great, the next item on the agenda is consideration of land use and development matters, proposed project potential development with utility issues for forty-one North Main Street. And David, do you want to set this up for us?
I think we're waiting for a laptop.
He's on, he's on.
Andrew. He has one with him?
Yeah.
Sean, can you get Andrew Consigli?
So, I don't know, we're not going to be able to sit out in the audience soon. Hopefully, everybody's neck is in good shape.
So Rick, do you, do you guys need to convene in a meeting, or are you not having a meeting?
I have no idea, I think I remember we were, we were planning to have a meeting.
And then just control, there we go.
Control minus.
Yep. Yeah, I'll do the best I can, this isn't. Hello? I'll do the best I can on the PowerPoint, it's not my computer, so. Uh, my name's Andrew Consigli from Civic Development, the development consultant on the proposed project, the Sherborne Town Center, forty-one North Main Street. I'm joined here by Gary Lebarsky from Barsky Real Estate Trust. Also, our engineers, our consultant team, Michael Malinowski from Allen and Major, and David Formato from Onsite Engineering. So the idea is that we'll go through a series of slides here that kind of outlines the project and the proposal. I guess we can, we can wait till questions to the end, if you can. And so we'll start with the first slide. Just give me a second, make sure I'm. Okay. Forty-one North Main Street, I think maybe about a year and a half ago, we met with the town and proposed some different ideas through some, through a sort of workshop. And we proposed many different types of densities. We ended up doing some work on that, going back and going back to the planning board. And we ended up working with an assisted living operator that was interested in partnering on the project on forty-one North Main Street. And so we, and then we also wanted to keep the retail component as well. We also wanted to keep the, and renovate, the reuse of the historic house. But to do all this, there was a major infrastructure issue that we were running into. There is obviously a, a well issue back there, not having enough room within the, the site on forty-one North Main Street, east of the tracks. And so we turned to our engineering group to come up with some alternatives for us to make the retail work along with the assisted living complex. So throughout this sort of slideshow presentation, it'll be outlining the, the steps it will take to do a, a sewage treatment plant. And the idea would be to do it in conjunction with the towns, to make it feasible for the project, and also it could add a, a big benefit for the town to, to be able to share in the sewage treatment plant, which will potentially increase the, you know, the walkability and the, and the livability of downtown. And so we can kind of get into a little bit more of that as we go on to the slides. So the, the, the six acre parcel that is fronting North Main Street and next to the heritage, the old Sherborne Inn, is, will be the assisted living complex up to a hundred and twenty beds. The proposal that we had before, in front of the planning board, was eighty beds, and that was working off of its own septic system. So with this, we would be able to increase the density slightly up by going on to a sewage treatment plant. And then we would also keep twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand square feet of retail, and that would include a small market, some small shops, serviced retail, and possibly a restaurant. And we're always thinking that the restaurant could go into the, the renovated historic house that's on the property. And there's been some talk about moving the house, and we're still working on exactly how much we would have to move it, if we even did have to move it. So that's still, still up in the air. And then the, the major, the other major component through all this is the wastewater treatment plant and the wells that I mentioned. So this is really focusing on the infrastructure that we would need to, to do the project. So I'll go, let me see here. So this is the site plan that we showed the planning board, probably about six months ago. And you'll see the assisted living operator to the right. And to the left, you'll see the, the retail shops. And so in the back would be a small market, and then in the front, fronting North Main Street is historic house, that would be reusing and renovating. And then there's also some small shops on the left-hand side there as well. And this is just very conceptual right now, so it's just, just for, just planning out the uses and dividing the site. And just to give you some other sort of landmarks, the train tracks are up on the right, up on the top. And then there's more land up to the, yep, up there. And then North Main Street is down towards the bottom of the screen. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. So this is the, even though a little bit squashed for some reason, out of proportion, but this is the assisted living complex. And we've shown a couple examples of the scale and the type that we were proposing here. And so it'd be a U-shaped building with the courtyard in back. And the top image is a building in Burlington, it's the Northbridge Assisted Living Complex. And then the one below is another, and actually, this is the one that we've been talking to, assisted living operator on the lower bottom. But it's that type of scale that we're thinking about for the assisted living operator. And then the other use that I want to point out is the retail. So in the back, it's the market, and that could run anywhere from eight thousand to ten thousand square feet. Gary's had some ideas about maybe re, even reusing the barn, parts of the barn to be, you know, incorporated into the market.
Can you show that with the pointer, what you call the back?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Michael. So. Yep. This building right here would be the market. You know, we'd have parking in the back and also parking, limited parking in the front. And then these would be the retail buildings here. And then this would be the historic house that would be reused and renovated, potentially into a restaurant. So this here, you know, it totals around twenty to twenty-five thousand square feet. And then this is the sort of type of architecture or scale that we're talking about, the retail shops, you know, one story tall. And then on the top would be the market building here, that would be, you know, very sort of contextual to, to the town of Sherborne, you know, very, you know, and somehow incorporating the barn look as well. Oh, maybe blank slide, let me see.
It was a snowy day.
Oh, there we go, it just takes a while to, to come up. Let me make sure I got the right file. I'll remember to bring my computer next time. So I'm going to hand the mic over to Michael Malinowski, you can talk about the, the infrastructure components of the, of the project.
Thank you, Andrew. Good evening, my name is Michael Malinowski, I'm with Allen and Major Associates. We can kind of go through the, what we're envisioning for kind of schematic purposes for the infrastructure. As, as Andrew had mentioned, we've kind of got the six acre parcel kind of in the middle, the assisted living component here, and the kind of retail shops. Main Street is along this area here, and we've got our railroad tracks. This is kind of an overview picture that kind of gets you representation of kind of the scale of the project that we're looking at. So we've got our kind of development area here. Mr. Lebarsky owns additional parcels to the west of the railroad tracks. And what we're envisioning is, we've got some wetlands on that area, but we've got kind of a nice big dry area in the middle, that it's large enough to support a domestic water well that would be permitted through DEP and, and the local conservation to provide water to support this development. The other kind of component that we are looking at is the town-owned ball fields that are in this lower section. The parcel is much bigger, it encompasses the cemetery in town. Go to the next slide, it kind of gives a, kind of gives a little bit kind of larger view, so we've got our assisted living here. Part of the proposal is, due to the size of the, the project, it's going to require a wastewater treatment plant. And then it's part of the discussions that the developers had with the town is kind of sharing the cost of wastewater treatment plant. And in doing that, providing a collection sort of, and creating a sewer district for the downtown area, which would allow the kind of businesses in this area to connect to sanitary needed, or if there's any sort of expansion in that area. As you may know, the expansion of any of these parcels along Main Street is kind of limited due to the fact that they need an onsite well and septic. So you're limited on how big you can develop any of those parcels. And then this slide kind of shows the proposed ball fields. We have a kind of schematic collection system that would be designed to, moving forward, which would allow commercial properties along the, the Main Street thoroughfare to connect to it. We also have designed, or get, will have a design for wastewater collection system for the property, for the retail and the, the assisted living component, which will be fed to an onsite treatment facility and pump station. As part of that, we would install leaching fields under the outfield portions of the ball fields. And we've kind of situated them, showing that they would be in the ball field, in the outfield area. So it's grass disturbance versus having to rebuild ball fields. And the sizes are, brush me. See that?
One twenty-five by one hundred.
I had one twenty-five by one hundred. So this field, based on the, the soils in the area, would support our development. And you can see that we have another area that provides approximately twenty-one thousand gallons of flow that could be processed in that leach field. So that kind of gives an area that would be allocated for our development, as well as twenty-one thousand gallons roughly of capacity for sewer that could be allocated to kind of the Main Street development area. And as you can see, we still have area here, so depending on the extent of what the town would like to kind of encompass as part of their sewer district, we have space to allocate to that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you envision the town to own the sewage treatment plant, or is that going to be your ownership?
No, it would be under the, our ownership.
So your ownership on our property?
Yes, but.
Yeah, so Dave Formato, Onsite Engineering, we're the wastewater consultant for the project. This would be envisioned as, as a public-private partnership, permitted through your local regulations as well as with the state. The state would probably require that, that the town and the developer be co-permites, but in terms of expenses and operational stuff, it certainly can all be done through the private entity in terms of construction and operation. And then essentially, what would be akin to like an intermunicipal agreement type of arrangement, where the town is working, whether it's, they own the collection system and they bill businesses on Main Street and then reimburse for those costs. So there, there's a bunch of different mechanisms, the state has a bunch of different ways that this works, it's, it's been done. So we're confident that something like this can work really well for the town of Sherborne, revitalizing the downtown district, while also essentially offsetting costs. Because to do something like this for the town, just as a town-owned entity with, you know, prevailing wages, public bid laws and all that stuff, it gets very expensive and complicated very quickly. Whereas on the private side, you know, their cost control structure is much different. So that public-private partnership is certainly something that would benefit both parties.
Well, that was my next question, was how much this was going to cost? And were you looking for public participation in the cost?
Yeah, so based on our experience for a project of this size, on the private side, it's probably between, you know, for their development only, it'd be between a one to two million dollar project. If you were going to start adding in the municipal component to it, it's going to increase, you know, you, you may be talking the collection system on Main Street type of thing, you're around a million dollars. If the, if the town went and created a sewer district and had to do the collection system, the leaching, and the effluent disposal themselves, you're probably talking, starting at two, up into the three range, just due to the fact that, you know, obviously, as a municipality, you're working under a different set of guidelines. So there, I think there is some real potential for some benefit doing in this public-private partnership.
And then we'll, we'll just, we'll continue with the last slide, and then we'll get to questions after this. And then I don't want to talk, talk about this.
Yeah, so just as a frame of reference for everybody, this is actually a private wastewater treatment facility for a condo complex in Westford. And that, that system is designed and sized for about forty-five thousand gallons per day. So it'd be somewhat similar to what we're talking about right now schematically, just in rough numbers of gallons. That building is, it's relatively small, there are some tanks in and around it that are buried underground. That building is eighteen feet tall, and it's in a footprint of about twenty-five by thirty-five. So it's a very small building. And this is something we envisioned that might be a good possibility to put somewhere along the ball fields, next to the possible effluent disposal. And, you know, it can be obviously configured to really look like anything you want. Nobody knows that that's a treatment plant until they're told.
So, so, sorry for that for a second. This is a, you, you, you're envisioning two separate treatment plants, one on your site for the private project and one on the ball fields?
No, the idea is everything would be collected and pumped to a treatment plant on the ball field, so there would just be one system.
Sure, two leach fields.
Well, there's two leach fields, but you, also, one of your diagrams here shows a pump house on the.
Yeah, we're assuming that we're going to need to pump, just from, right now, it's kind of conceptual.
So it's not treatment, it's only.
No, no, exactly, it's just conveying, it's part of the collection system, right? It's just conveying sewage across the street, sure.
But this building would be on the ball field?
That's the thought, I mean, there's a lot of open space there, it seems like it could possibly fit well within that structure. And again, this is obviously very conceptual, just, you know, starting, as a starting.
Why would a hot dog stand?
We already have a hot dog stand. And then, if you ever went down there, you'd know that.
So the zone one is completely within your property? You don't, the zone one is not extended past his property bounds?
Correct, yeah, exactly. This is a three hundred foot zone one radius.
You think it'll be three hundred feet?
That's just based upon the, you know, the twenty-one thousand gallons we're estimating for this particular development, so. It, it could also end up being a combination of wells, so if you did a well field, each well has a smaller zone, one encompasses the other one, so. There's a couple of different options, but, you know, provided that you find the water in the bedrock fractures, that parcel should be big enough to get enough water.
And if I haven't done testing, but do you have any indication what the yield is of that area, any surrounding wells or anything like that, or just born locks?
No, it's, it's, it's going to be bedrock, so, you know, yeah, as you're aware, it's, it's, how deep do you go to get, you know, do you get lucky, or, you know, I mean, obviously there, the, the advantages is that there's a lot of wetlands in that area, so that, you know, there is an indication that water is, is moving in and around that area, so I would take that as a positive sign, but it's, it's, I don't know. And this really hasn't been much testing on that scale done out there that we know of.
And also the downtown water study, we took the, what we thought the uses were, the current uses, we're still under a four hundred foot zone one, but it was a little more than three hundred, it was in that range, we calced it out.
Okay.
So the capacity would be currently estimated to be about forty-three thousand gallons per day, is that?
Yeah, so the, the exercise that we did was, we looked at the rough uses for the, for the assisted living parcel for our project.
Right.
And came up with a, you know, a benchmark, a starting number around twenty-one, twenty-two thousand gallons per day.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm in the sew, I'm back on the sewage here.
Right, so for your stuff, we were just looking at how much could we possibly fit? And actually, Andrew, maybe go to the last slide, it might help a little bit. Part of the reason we're at, where we're at is that, in looking at the soils and the surfaceal geology of the downtown area, that area that's in red is the town-owned parcel that encompasses the ball fields. And the orange is a vein of coarse sands and gravels. So the thought was, is that that particular area would be very highly conducive, based upon mapping, to effluent disposal on larger volumes. So that's kind of the genesis of this, thinking that, okay, if you want to put effluent disposal in these areas, you're going to get your biggest bang for your buck in those types of soils. Following through on that, the next step was, if we're looking at around twenty-two thousand gallons per day for our flow, what does that look like for effluent disposal? And that's, we did some real rough numbers, making a ton of assumptions, but that's what we came up with, that a hundred by a hundred and twenty-five is, is a leaching size. And then we put it on the, the figure to say, okay, that actually would fit in the outfield of one of the fields. So if we wanted to double that, just to go to the next level up, we have, we could fit another one of those fields. And as, as Mike mentioned, there's actually more room over there that's not being utilized. So that flow could, from an effluent disposal scenario, under the current assumptions we're making, expand to greater than that. It may need to be more than that, you know, we haven't really gotten into that level of detail yet on. You know, we haven't really gotten into that level of detail yet on kind of what the downtown area currently looks like, what it may want to look like. But just as a starting point, to kind of come to you guys with some, you know, stuff that you can look at, put your fingers on. There is the capacity, we think, to do something really great out there, and not, you know, have really problems up front. Like, I really don't know that this is all going to fit. So I think there's some ability to put some decent amount of volume.
And that's consistent with the Charles River Watershed Association, and does study on the downtown, determine if they had a treatment system, what a leach field would be, was about these sizes. So even for the, a larger area, that's consistent. No one ever did any, what do you call it, perk tests or anything else?
Right. And that would be the next step, is to actually go out there and get eyes on, you know, a day or two of soil testing in and around there, just to see what you have for soils, depths, water table, all those. And once you get that information, you really can put some pretty good estimates together on what you actually have and what you could possibly do.
But just to go back to Chuck's question, you got 22,000 coming, or 21,000 of wastes? Or is that, what's the capacity of the well?
Oh, so the well itself? Yeah, we basically were looking at about 22,000. So that would be water to serve this project.
Okay, and then the disposal, you're counting on roughly 45, so that means 23?
Yeah.
Or 24? You anticipate, rough calculations, is, would be coming from the businesses?
Correct, yes.
Along North Main Street there?
Yep, exactly.
And just to kind of add a comment, I mean, a lot of the permitting is going to be obviously Board of Health and the Planning Board, but I think one of the selectmen's purview is going to be the interest in property. So they want a certain interest in property, which is going to be the leach field and the ball field. And I think it's going to be up to us to determine, like, what's the best interest of the community in order to convey that interest in property.
Well, just a legal question as to who has jurisdiction of the property?
Easement or fee?
Some of that, some of that property might be school property, some of it might be park and rec property?
Recreation.
It's recreation?
All built on.
So it may not be, the property may not be under our jurisdiction.
The Pine Hill School, leach field, that's...
Leach field and drainage system.
Which is a use if it's designated, yeah.
And we also allowed a private enterprise to dispose, use a leach field on the ball fields too.
Fire station.
Fire station?
Leach field is changing use.
Didn't we do Rose's, didn't Rose's garage?
No, every one.
Wild is a change of use.
Okay.
This is a residentially zoned parcel, right? The recreational fields. Do we need to change zoning to serve a commercial development with septic on a residential zone?
Or is it Article 97?
I think it's both.
Would it be a change of use?
Yeah, that's something that we would have to look into.
I think you do need a zoning change on that.
Obviously, this is just very conceptual right now. We want to obviously get something on, up on the board and see, and get a reaction from you, because we do think there's benefits for both the town and the development of 41 North Main Street, which I think will add, you know, to the, to the center as well.
Do you guys have any figures or numbers on the number of vehicles per day that would end up being through there, whether from visitors, staff working there, the marketplace, the retail, any kind of guessings left?
We don't have hard and fast numbers, because it's more of, kind of schematic. So we don't have, I don't have, we don't have specific uses for the retail. If it's, you could have a little more traffic if it's a restaurant, if it's all commercial and that kind of stuff. The same thing goes with the assisted living. We're looking at upwards of 120 beds, it could go down depending on what the user has. When, when the project moves forwards, we would do a full traffic study and kind of look at the full impacts of traffic, both from our development. Part of what they do on the traffic study is they look at our development, they'd also talk to the town if there's potential kind of growth that's coming. That all gets kind of factored in to the overall.
When we first came, I think a couple of years ago, to talk about, I think we had three different schemes of mixed-use villages, and we had a lot of, you know, some housing on there. And the reaction that we got was it was going to produce a lot of traffic. And so we went back to the drawing board and we said, what are some of the uses that aren't, isn't going to create that level of traffic that we had proposed? And one was the assisted living operator. They don't, they don't create as much traffic as housing does. And we limited the amount of retail that we had. So it was part of listening to, you know, the previous, during the previous workshop.
What level of assistance would that company be willing?
You know, in terms of their operations? Whether it's like a memory care or assisted living or...
Nursing?
Yeah, that's essentially still up in the air. We've been talking to a few different assisted living operators, and some do just memory care, some do assisted living, and some do a combination. So that's, that's something that we just haven't worked out yet on exactly what that use is.
Eddie, before we go to your, Eddie, before you go to your quick, I want to loop back. John, what's this, what are the ball fields currently zoned? What zoning district are they in now?
I think they're just some residential with it.
Okay. Great. And Eddie, I have a question for you when you finish with your question, which is 40B calculations for assisted living units.
Same question.
Okay.
Same mindset here, and I'm sure you've, I know you recently did a project in Lincoln, and I know you're familiar with 40B, and this is a dilemma that we've been dealing with. And I'm curious, I know I've put the question to the state about whether assisted living facilities, does each unit count as a housing unit when we're calculating our total housing unit and trying to determine where we stand as far as our 10% for affordable housing? And the dilemma that there has to be seen, an assisted living facility in this state that has a 25% affordable level that would allow for all units to be counted, because it's just too expensive to do that, so that business model doesn't work. There seems to be a gray area on, the answer I got back from the state was that, well, it would, that sometimes the census kind of uses different methodology, and they may or may not, it depends on if they count it as, they consider it a group home versus assisted living versus apartments. And I'm curious what your research, what you've...
Through our research, initially, we found out that it's usually, for every, there is no affordability considered in the assisted living operator. So for every unit, it doesn't get counted towards, it doesn't get counted towards the subsized housing inventory, but it doesn't also, it doesn't also count towards the inventory, the amount of homes being built. So it's almost like just a wash.
I've heard, I've heard two different answers.
Yeah, that's, that's what we've heard, and I think that will...
Continue to work on getting a good answer.
Yeah, and it'll probably have to be a combination of a legal team in talking to the state.
Could I suggest, before people talk, that they identify themselves? A for the record and B for our viewers, who ultimately will want to see this? So if you could just state your name and address, I guess, so that we've got some kind of record here?
And you're Mr. Duransus, correct?
I'm not sure.
John Haley, 14 South McCrove. First, it is on our, our end, so we're the ones. The second thing is, when we talked before, was the concept was of memory care, and the idea was that memory care did approach towards SHI, whereas assisted living does.
Okay. That's, okay, that's what the, that's where I remember the conversation was. And so, so we would have to work through that, because right now, we're unsure whether it's going to be memory care, like our previous proposal, or whether it would be assisted living. But that's, that's something they would have to work through.
I'm at the Town of Mill Street. So sort of in my work life, I'm commissioned, there are lots of open channels, and I would say the difference in terms of the infrastructure between who lives in assisted living, who lives in memory care is pretty substantial in terms of the needs of local services, what the healthcare would be for human mass, what the frequency of emergency traffic at all. I was just, I was just, there are probably substantial differences in what it feels like if you live in that neighborhood, based on how frequently people are really moved into the hospital. And the other thing, if you cobbles enough, is just, you know, depending on how many beds you have and how much sewage you have, it's also a question of how much pharmaceuticals you have and other pieces you're deploying to a concentrated waste area. But I think having strategies to mitigate that risk is quite wild. I don't have any data on that, but certainly as you kind of look at this population, average human mass is like 15 to 20.
Okay.
Versus zero type 2 in the younger families. And so I think these are other pieces that are sort of non-trivial, what ends up looking to work.
Okay. Thank you. Daryl?
Down Druncy Forest Street. Now, and a system of this size would be regulated by mass treatment fees, so there would be standards, but they have nothing for pharmaceuticals. And they wouldn't address some of the chemicals that may come from businesses that could potentially be there. So in terms of planning, what you'd want to see, like, I'd want to see tight tanks, or restrictions on, you know, no dry cleaners, or something else in terms of what might be contributed to that system, because if it's large, it's going to be raised in...
Okay, thank you.
Ian, I can talk a little bit about you.
Yeah, please.
So those are all great points, and it's, it's the stuff that everybody in this industry is wrestling with right now, including the state. And I will say that for something like this, the envision because of those concerns, as well as the sensitivity of, there's a bunch of water supplies in and around that area. As you can see on that map, all the pink shading is water supply protective zones. This system most likely is going to be what the state's considering best available technology, a membrane bioreactor. And just a little bit about that, it's essentially a conventional treatment process. It's a biological treatment process, but at the very end of the process is a membrane. And the membrane itself is a micro porous membrane. So essentially, the barrier that it forms, viruses, bacteria, and anything larger than that won't pass through. You essentially use vacuum pumps to pull the treated water through the membrane. So the stuff that ends up coming out of the treatment system is essentially drinking water quality. It, it looks like water. If you put a glass of water next to it, you wouldn't be able to tell which one is what. The other advantage to that system is, is that because you have a physical barrier, you retain a very high population of microbes in the system, which does, studies are starting to show a little bit, it does actually help a little bit with things like pharmaceuticals and this and that, because the biology is just so intense in a small area. They're feeding on all sorts of stuff, so there is some data to suggest that it may actually improve the quality of that without, you know, over, for example, if you had a bunch of Title V compliant septic systems in and around the area, which you do, that are essentially unregulated, even though the volumes can increase, the net improvement you're going to see based upon providing treatment to the groundwater is going to be measurable. So we feel it's actually, there's also an environmental benefit to something like this, particularly if you're looking at doing the public-private partnership, where you're taking all those septic systems essentially offline. And then on the last part about tight tanks and stuff like that, you actually are prohibited from putting any industrial chemicals into these treatment systems. The only type of treatment system you can discharge those to are large-scale municipal plants. So in this instance, if someone wanted to put a dry cleaner in or something along those lines, they would have to put in a tight tank. Even things like dentist offices have to have a separate tight tank for their amalgam waste. So this is highly regulated on that level. And I'm sure the Board of Health probably in town, you know, is familiar with that stuff as well, so.
Daryl, somebody behind you hasn't spoken yet.
All of the technology we're talking about comes at a substantial cost, I would imagine, and I'm wondering about the public-private sharing of the facility. Over a period of time, I would imagine that the maintenance costs of such a system, replacement costs of technologies, how would you see that mix happening in terms of public-private sharing?
In our experience, what works really well is, it's essentially, not unlike your water bill, where you essentially pay a rate based upon how much water you use. This would essentially be, you know, a rate based upon either how much water you use, if everybody is, if there's the ability to meet at the water. But if not, it could be simple, something as simple as using Title V flows, the aggregate volume that you're assigned for your use, and your cost is proportional to how much you contribute. So that does actually work fairly well, we've seen in the past. And I think that in terms of operational costs, the membrane bioreactor market's actually been maturing very fast in the state. So for something like that, the annual operating cost at these flows, it's going to be $50,000 to $100,000 a year, including maintenance, reserves, chemicals, all that stuff, treatment, sludge removal. So it's not a huge, you know, even though it sounds like really cutting-edge, it's actually, the prices have been coming down because there's more and more of these systems being used, and it's becoming more of a better-known technology.
So if, it is sort of a follow-up. I understand you're talking about public contribution by means of the fact that the school's going to be in the system, or the fire department's going to be in the system. Do you envision this is also going to require some subsidy from the town? Or is it going to be self-sustaining?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's probably to be determined.
Yeah, I mean, that's the idea. We're going to do the numbers next and figure out the financials.
I think that's a pretty big issue probably in people's mind in terms of, you know, it's one thing to pay to treat the town's waste, it's another thing to subsidize a private development otherwise. And so I think you should bear that in mind. And the other question I had was, can you give some examples? Because I think it would help folks, you've mentioned this has been done before, and maybe it's been done at this scale before and with recreational fields before. Can you give some examples of places that, that this has been done in?
Well, I don't know if you want to talk about Bolton?
Yeah, so the last project that we worked on that was similar, so the town of Bolton, they have, their downtown area, in very similar situation, a school, all the municipal buildings, a bunch of, you know, businesses that were all on septic systems and public water, their own private water supplies. And the schools actually were the driver in this particular case, because their septic and water supplies were not in conformance with the state code for separation between the two. So they ended up doing a treatment plant to start the schools, all the town buildings, and a small collection area for just the downtown district. And it worked quite well. It was, you know, a model that I think fits very well in here, because it was, it was pretty contained. It was, you know, they defined what the downtown area was, and they just said, this is where we're going to start, this is where we're going to stop, this is who's going to contribute to the system. And, you know, the town in that particular case owned it, because the driver was obviously the school. So it was kind of a little bit different scenario. But it's a similar model, and that system's been up and running for probably since 2006-ish, 2007, so a good 10 years now.
Was there state funding for that project? I was looking for Roger Demmler, who was Water Commissioner in town. And I have a vague recollection that Roger said that on the treatment side, that there was some state funding available. Was there state funding needed in the Bolton project? And that may actually be a question for you, Paul, if you know or are aware of any state funding for the municipal piece of this project like this.
Yeah, there is low-interest loans through SRF. It's essentially the EPA's Clean Water Program that filters through the state down to local municipalities. There is also USDA grants available, but it really depends on, you know, it's the rural development program. So, you know, there are metrics associated with the town that would make that.
And we're pretty rural.
Well, let me just add to that, that one of the questions I asked at the beginning was, who's going to own this? And you said you were going to own it.
Right.
And so there's a problem with getting state funding for, through us, for a project that we don't own. Our, apparently what we're going to do...
Agree, but for example, you could do the collection system, right? If you put in your own collection system in Main Street for the downtown area, and that's not part of, that's not owned by the development, there would be some possibilities to do that. I think that it's certainly pretty early in the process, and I think that the idea is to, as Andrew said, get together and hash out all these details and...
Yeah, because as we're going through this process, it is, you know, obviously an expense and time to get into all this information, so we want to put something on the board and see if, you know, it's something that has legs and you're interested in. If it is, then we can keep moving forward and get the financial information, you know, everything about any type of grants that could be available, you know, the legal situation in terms of the zoning, all that still has to be worked out. If we kind of came here with all that information and threw it at you, it'd just be, it would be, it would be a lot of information. So this is why we want to start just laying out the pieces and seeing your thoughts. So this is why we want to start just laying out the pieces and seeing your thoughts on the, number one, the uses, and also the placement and potential of a public-private partnership.
Yeah, just a quick recognition. And obviously, the details can go on forever on something like this. I know that the water, the downtown water study has done by the water commissioners has vetted some, has actually done a whole downtown sewer study. It's actually vetted a couple different type of sewer districts and even calculated flows. And obviously, that can be integrated into this. Ultimately, in the specifics, as far as who owns what and who owes what, would really, I think would have to be vetted largely with the interest in property. I really do. I mean, the town cannot convey an interest in property without getting the, the best value and without doing it with, for the interests of the citizens. And I think that's where these kind of specifically be vetted. Like, what type of treatment there is, be through the Board of Health, how the development goes, through the Planning Board, but I think through us would be the extent and how much other sewer flows go into this in the interest of property, is what I think. And that would be integrated, I don't know, ten years' worth of study that's been done with the downtown sewer district.
Well, just one other question, and that's the capacity analysis. I, I know for the sewer commissions that I represent that capacity is worth its weight in gold. So you've come up with this number of 23,000 gallons, which would be the capacity that we would have available for the downtown. Does that represent your estimate of 100% of that capacity? Or is that 50% of that capacity? Or is, what, what proportion do you see that capacity number representing for what you see in Sherburne?
Yeah, so I, I think that we're, we're probably not really there yet, but what I would suggest is that, you know, if the board or the town has an appetite for this, that you're right, capacity is worth its weight in gold. So the idea would be is to maximize, you know, effluent disposal is, is the limiting factor in this particular instance, right? So I think that the idea would be is to maximize that. If that ball field area presents itself as a really great area that can have a lot of capacity, then, you know, you probably want to look at permitting all of that, because then it gives the town flexibility as you go forward, right? So I think that from our perspective, it was just more about an exercise, trying to understand what would, you know, our effluent disposal look like, and then what else could be fit out there. Admittedly, you know, we, we had kind of just taken the same size and said, okay, you can fit a box this size here, you can fit the same box here, and it looks like they'll fit and not really encroach upon each other. So yeah, it looks like as of right now, you're probably talking about two 20, 2,000 gallon per leach fields. But as, you know, and Andrew, I'm going to scroll back up, when you look at the overlay, there's actually plenty of area that wasn't, you know, wasn't like, you know, the thought was you put leaching fields everywhere on that site. So if the number that the town needed to really do a good job in sewer all of downtown was 30,000 gallons, that would be, that should be the number, right? I mean, I think that's really the, the process, right? So if you look at that, obviously, there's additional outfields that haven't, you know, we didn't put, maybe you could even fit a third area in there of similar size, right? So I think that there, this kind of demonstrates that there are options, hopefully.
It's just that we, we don't get very far in allowing development in the downtown area if the capacity that we supply is equal to what the capacity is today, because then there's zero, zero growth. The capacity's all used up with what's already there, doesn't provide anything for any ability to expand to more usage than the capacity.
Yeah, agreed, and that's certainly part of the equation, right? I mean, if, if the, if the capacity's less than what you have there currently, right, it's a non-starter. So you really, you know, the idea is to see what you have and go forward and, right.
Do we know that?
Well, growth and loss of efficiency. Yeah, we had some numbers on, I don't know what is offhand, but you also have, especially for, you know, Anthony with leach field, you have to account for loss of efficiency each year. Membranes last, especially vacuum membranes, last like 10 years, so you have to, you know, get new ones each 10 years. It's for the long term.
I think a key part of this, just I didn't listen to anything yet, but with what Eric said, kind of as a citizens as a whole, like, I think we'd really need to see some sort of cost-benefit analysis on this. You know, what kind of revenue is this going to generate for the town if this development goes forward versus how much cost it's going to be to the town, to, to the citizens? And, you know, what's, how it fits in with the planning board, I know the planning board's been doing a lot of work on their downtown planning, and how does this fit into your plan? And as Addie said, if it's, if memory care doesn't count towards our total units, that's a very important component, because we just came up with our housing plan. So we've got to make sure it fits into all pieces. And I think coming here tonight, I thank you for coming and showing, giving us the idea, so then a lot of different people can provide the input from all the different boards, because I know Daryl's got a lot of expertise on this as well, so.
Susie? And then Daryl?
Susie, we all right with the hunting lane. I, I understand that Mr. Lebarsky owns and a budding parcel of some, I don't know, 30-plus acres to the west, or maybe northwest. And I was wondering if there's a phase two for this project, or what is going to have, what the plans are for that land, which doesn't seem to be included in the plan.
Yeah. It's not included, because right now, there, there isn't any plan for it. You know, we, we have, we've talked about it, but it's not like we're going to be putting mixed-use development over there if possible. It could be single-family homes. It could, he could decide to just keep it as it is. But there was no future plans at this time. We're really just concentrating on the North Main Street side.
For, in fact, just to follow on-
Well, exactly, a portion of it is, is the well, but in terms of develop, yeah, in terms of vertical development, there wasn't any plans.
As we go into the septic capacity question, if, if additional septic capacity was discovered on the ball fields, would that contribute to more private development on that additional piece of land that for which, right now, there are no plans?
Daryl, you had, you, Daryl, you had your hands up a while ago.
Yes. Along from what Eric had to say is that there are a lot of details that need to be worked out, what I would want to see, what had some issues before, is just that the town would want to, I think, be engaged in planning and think about things that the DEP isn't taking care of. So even though it may be compliant with the current regulations, some of those issues I mentioned, I work with pharmaceutical companies, and it's not always easy to treat, treat their waste. It's not always responsive to biological and even to memory. So to me, those are the details that would have to be worked out and to, what kind of protections, given that school's water supply is coming from there, which is kind of a lot of people who are relying on water quality, and so that's really crucial. And if you live in another, and the cost of the downtown water, something like 30 plus a year.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, I think it was conservative around Title V, 30, but I don't want to say that on the record. What, um, just from memory, I mean, it's like four years old. I guess, a quick thing, obviously, there's countless details you can go through, and to permit any water and wastewater system goes through huge vetting. I guess, what is our next steps? Like, what are the next steps from you guys, and what are the next steps from our guys? The kind of-
Can I ask a question before that, actually, Eric? Because that's a good question, but I think might be a good community question. My question is, for the town to prepare, what options do you have to this property if you don't use any of the town land for sewage treatment? Because the town has to look at, yes, it'd be nice to have sewage treatment, because the town buildings downtown, but it's not necessarily an urgent need, it's a long-term need. So I think we have to decide what we need to do. Let me just finish.
I think it's a more pressing need than you-
I don't, I don't agree, but-
Characterize that as.
The issue I ask is, what are the options for this property if you don't have access to any town land?
When we went to the planning board, six months ago, we had a plan that was essentially very similar to the one that we have up there on the parcel, but we were working off a septic, like a Presby system, which wasn't going over the, the 90-bed room count. And we had the well in the same location. So this is, this is something that we, I think, would benefit the town. That's why we're-
We have to compare it to a base case, so what-
Exactly, yeah.
I didn't understand what you said. What's your plan for wastewater treatment if you didn't use town land?
So I don't know if you can point. So this was the previous proposal that we had in front of the planning board here. Actually, let me go back to the main plan. This, this plan here, and we actually had a septic, a septic field, and there was one that fit right back here. And then we had the well, the well over in this area here. So it was very similar to what we had already proposed. But we feel there's more of a benefit to come here and propose a public-private partnership. Sorry, did I get you? Sorry.
Something fielded in the back of that, since the facility would handle 120 beds-
No, it wasn't 120, it wasn't 120 beds, it was at the previous, it was, it was 80 beds. It was a, it was a memory care.
But it was enough to accommodate an 80-bed facility?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, correct. Yeah.
Sorry, Susan, I'm not bad, but-
And the retail?
With the retail as well.
As is.
Yeah.
So Jared, I just want to say, I, I think these guys came in here to see if there was interest in them pursuing their vision and their, and their ideas further. I mean, I, at least at the, the board table, I think people all had questions, but no, I didn't hear anybody saying, this is a non-starter. I mean, I would, I would encourage you to, to keep thinking about it and think about all the questions people in here have asked tonight. I think it's a, you know, it's a thinking out of the box kind of an approach, which is attractive, but it also prompts a lot of questions, because it's not something that, that people have seen or are used to, and-
Yeah, we really appreciate your coming. The, the devil is in the details, obviously, the funding and the cost-benefit and the alternatives.
And it kind of goes back to, to the next step. So if we're like, okay, what are the next steps? Are we okay with whatever next steps are? Anything as detailed as doing perk testing or just going before a different board, just to kind of get an idea of, you know?
Yeah, I mean, one of the reasons we want to come in here is, is to introduce ourselves and, and start interacting with some of the boards and members that haven't the, the information that we need. Instead of, you know, reinventing the wheel, we want to go out and start talking to, to different boards and committees. And in the next step for us also is figuring out the financial aspects of all this. So next time we do come in, we can, you know, be talking about numbers and what are the real benefits to the town of doing something like this. So that, that are the next steps for us. But we did want to come in here and see if there's any, I guess, showstoppers, if it's something that you saw up here as a collective group that, that, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't go, wouldn't go forward. So it seems like there's, we should go forward, you know, which is what we want to hear. But I don't know if there's any additional comments.
Thank you for coming in and echo what Mike said. I think it's really important to keep the planning board and the Board of Health apprised on what you're thinking of as getting input earlier. I think it's helpful. Paul, do you have something?
Just, Mike-
Yeah, Recreation.
I'm a lawyer, so I think about legal issues. And if this is park and rec land, it probably is going to require a special act of the legislature with two-thirds roll call vote and all of that, which is achievable, but it's like a couple of years to get it done. And if, so if you add a couple of years to your thinking, does that change where, where you're coming from?
It's, it's all part of the equation. We got to figure that out, and Gary does own the land, so it's not like we're, we have an option on the land with another landowner. This is his vision and something that-
Well, I'm talking about the ball field.
You're talking about the septic.
Oh, this, well, this, this, it's all part of the same plan if we, right?
This means lead time. Be about two years' lead time to actually get the Article 90, are you talking Article 97?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, exemption. It just is what it is, you know, the recreational property. I'm assuming it's Article 97. If it's a change of use, it's just a process you need to factor in, let's put it that way.
Yes, Rick O'Barrick, career six days in the road, another lawyer, like 60% of the board in front of you. And I, I think with Paul, and I do agree with Paul, that you really ought to have a very good lawyer, and I don't know who that might be, but just because you might have some hidden showstoppers, just in the structuring and the, the Article 97, who owns what piece of land, and who can do what and where, no matter how much you want to work with you, you want to work with us in getting that out of the table early, and everybody's-
Absolutely. And one of the reasons why we didn't come in with, with that information is if we started asking questions around town to different people, ownership, it would have caused a lot of, you know, inquiries, and, and so this is why we want to get it first in this, you know, at this level.
And Rick, your board has, what, 66% lawyers? I'm just trying to run the arithmetic in my head.
John, David, fourteen seven Wood Road, Brandywood. I'm not sure, based on points, if it's, if the recreation fields are being destroyed, yeah, they're not being destroyed, they would be enabled to continue as they are, that may not create a new, in terms of getting from-
They may be greener.
Yeah.
John, that, that points to the fact that this treatment facility, if there were private land nearby, there, there's a lot of private land that's not too far from there.
Right, that's right.
Also, so you, you ought to at least evaluate whether that's an option for the treatment facility, if it's going to save you two years or some, some amount of time.
You have to get legal opinion. I had an opinion once, you put a pipe through a property, pump change of use, doesn't do anything, no leach field, nothing, just a pipe through a property.
Twenty-six Elliott Street, did you envision the existing businesses tapping in to this waste treatment plant?
Yeah, that would be the, that would be the idea, is that the downtown area and future business, the existing businesses and future businesses would be able to utilize the capacity of the sewage treatment plant.
So in your capacity figures, it includes both-
Uh, that's one of the questions-
And the existing businesses.
Yeah, that's one of the questions that have, has been brought up, and it looks like we do have capability with additional ball, you know, additional land on the ball fields to do that. But it's something that we got to get into the calculations and, and figure out-
And the cost, what the cost-
And the cost as well.
Level business to tap into it.
Exactly.
Again, you've got to have a leaching field on the ball field, that's your plan, there'd be a leaching field, so there will be leach-
Right, yeah, correct, yes.
Coming out, it won't be a sealed system. And is there any danger of odors or anything coming out of this wastewater treatment plant sometimes?
I don't know if you want to talk about that.
People see the open-able plants that have quite odors.
Yeah, so there's, there's typically day-to-day no odor. I mean, the, inside the building, you may get like a musty odor or wet dog type smell because you're, you have water in there.
In the, in the treatment facility.
Yeah, in the treatment facility. When you're pumping, you know, for all those of you that have septic systems, obviously, when, when they come to pump out the tank, there's odors associated with that event because they're pumping out the tank. So that, that is something that does occur with these, because it's the nature of the beast. But it's certainly a temporary thing in nature, and it's, for these particular things, it's something that's scheduled, so you typically work around not making it a nuisance. And then, but there are also mechanisms of active odor control, which probably, depending on where the facility is, you know, you'd want to factor that into the equation, whether it's taking any process air and putting it through activated carbon filters to scrub out those odors. And we've seen that done on a bunch of different plants. We're doing one in Hingham now that it's, it's actually an assisted-living facility, and the, the treatment building itself is on one side of the parking lot from the facility, so they have active odor control as part of the design.
Because of the kitchen playing ball, all of a sudden-
Absolutely. Right, it's a non-starter, absolutely, right.
Terrific. Andrew, thank you very much for coming in. Thanks to you and your team, it's very helpful.
Yeah, and we'll continue the conversation and, and probably be in again with more information.
Terrific.
Mr. Schaefer, is that a moment?
It is that moment.
Is the intent of the advisory meeting to continue our meeting over at the police station? Did I get the motion to continue the study?
That room's empty.
I have intended to continue the advisory meeting over there.
Quiet, quiet, quietly.
I'm not sure if I formally need to do this enough, but I-
Quietly, right?
Move over that way? I can just, sorry, I guess, right? On favor? Let's go.
Perfect, thanks.
Always find a blanket, something like laser.
The next item on the agenda is the-
It's not a way to get a good photo.
Town campus site plan.
Zack you in the eye with a laser.
An update from Sean Colleen.
I don't think, I don't think I've seen that before. I don't think I've seen a board member assaulted with a laser. I've avoided my cat toys and everything, I always avoided it.
Eric, you're going to quickly learn how to turn a-
Do you know how to turn the projector off?
What's the first name? Gary. Actually, why don't we take a five-minute bio break? Okay, the next item on the agenda is an update and finalization of the town campus site plan. Sean Colleen, CM and D Director.
So I presented the plan last meeting. Nothing has really changed. We did get a response back from DEP.
And what was that?
It was quite a positive response. I sent it to the board. It was basically asking to incorporate in the plans a slight change, a subsurface change that was made. And there was a sketch sent to them during their review, so they were basically asking to finalize the plans to include those changes. So we did that. Over the Fourth of July week, the engineers made those revisions and that was sent in yesterday back to DEP. There was some other minor comments about the ongoing testing that will be done during the course of construction. But other than that, it was, it was a very positive response. I would assume, maybe Eric has some comments on that?
I thought it was great. I had a really good response to comments. I'll be the first to say I was a little pessimist when I saw our response, but you know what? I'm glad to be wrong. It was really, I thought it was a really almost just minimal comments and helps us move forward.
So what, do we have a, an estimate on when the cease and desist order will be lifted?
I would think a few weeks for them to just review that last set of plans. There should be no surprises. It's exactly what we showed them.
Terrific.
In the sketch.
Which was submitted yesterday. Is that according to this letter that we had here?
Yes.
That's great.
And then we have a meeting in a couple of weeks again here. I expect that the library should be able to present probably the change, the, the cost of those changes, which we have some numbers back from the contractor, we're still going through them and vetting the numbers. At which time, maybe perhaps we could ask for a final vote on the, on the site plan.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, there's no reason for a vote today on a site plan, so why don't we wait until there's actual approval and we have the cost numbers, so we, and the voters know what, how this all fits together with the project as a whole.
Right. Chuck, you have a question? Yeah, Susie?
We have a late breaking addition to the plan for the general area here. And I'm going to let Peggy explain our adventure. We had a little adventure.
I, I don't know how much, if they're all landscape around the library, it's going to rest. Our concern as members of the historical commission was with the sign that's off the perimeter of the library near us, parking, there's the town hall parking lot.
Of the retaining wall?
Right, there's, there's a stone plaque and a cornerstone, and there's also a historical sign. And we came all the way up the dirt hillside and to take a closer look. And both the sign and the stone plaque are something that we would like to see greater access to. The information on the plaque is really interesting and remarkable. And the, the stone tablet is actually a piece from the Solomon Academy building, actually from the tower.
The fourth floor tower. You can see it up there, the old photograph that's on the sign.
So what we would like to see is some access, you know, there, there are the steps that kind of sweep up towards the front of the library. There could be some way to incorporate a smaller set of steps, either from the top or the low, so people can actually get to that.
Well, the sidewalk goes right by it now.
There's a new path that's going to leave, essentially if you walked out the side door here and made your way towards that corner, there's going to be a handicap accessible ramp that's going to go right up the side of that wall and to the back terrace of the library.
Perfect, because.
That's why we cut the tree down.
The text on the sign is such that it tells, it tells the whole story of Solomon Academy and it's really.
It's going to be very much in your face now.
Amazing building.
Way of it.
It is.
I was intrigued about this mysterious sign with, what did it say? I was waiting to hear what did it say.
But we recommend a hard hat until then.
I'm just glad we have a proactive and energetic historical commission bringing stuff like this to us, so thank you. I think that's great.
Any fear?
It was fun, yeah. We'll enjoy it.
If you're dynasty, anything Masonic from the, or Masonry from Solomon Academy, kind of my house, that's where all the bricks came from.
Is your property business plan online anywhere?
I don't think the current site plan's on there, but it's probably at a stage now that we, it could be.
Probably makes sense, once we have final approval from DEP, then it's going to be finalized. Before getting a plan that's been changing so much, it probably makes sense to put it on once it's, once it's approved, or when, especially by the DEP, because that's kind of.
Elena, are you asking for a copy? I'm sure somebody could send you a copy.
All right, I mean, there's copies, if you want to look at it, there is.
Yeah. The DEP had raised a lot of issues, so.
There's one right there. That's a set of prints right there.
There's a possibility that that plan was going to change substantially, depending on what the DEP negotiations, how they were finalized. Peter?
Peter Lifford of Dopping Brook Road. Does this site plan go all the way down to Sawland Street?
What?
Does the site plan go all the way to Sawland Street?
Yeah.
My question is going to be, that there's been some lost parking on Sawland Street, since the street was paved and rained and now there's some barred rocks along the edge where the youth keep nosing parking.
Yeah.
Is that going to remain there? Is that intentional? Can we get some parking back?
That's going to become part of the detention basin, and that was never nosing parking that was legal, that was just allowed.
We know that, was it legal?
So that whole detention basin's going to get redug.
Oh, is it, okay.
And so some of that might get graded slightly better. We had to put something there to protect the road since we just did it. And when grading a road, you don't grade it around the lawn and parking. So I suspect that'll, that issue will get better, but right now, it's going to get worse.
And what's the timeframe for getting better? Certainly, probably not by the time church population grow in September.
I learned about a year ago not to talk timeframes with that project. You're asking the wrong guy.
Anything else you need from us then? We're going to finalize the plan. Any other questions up here?
Well, at some point, I think we need a, an executive session to talk about.
Next meeting.
Yeah, I'd just say, there was a lot of pessimism up here about DEP. I'm really glad that didn't come to pass, I think, you know, and I'm glad we held out and kind of reacted to what ended up happening rather than, than jumping the gun on anything. So that was good. Thanks, Sean, for being our guide through that.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the applicants and appointments to two seats on the Conservation Commission, terms to expire on June 15th, 2021. There were three applicants, Courtney Eck, Sidney Ostrowski, Cindy Ostrowski, and Peter Lifford. Michael, did you want to?
Sure.
Recommendation of the Conservation Commission?
Sure, I'll just make a little statement upfront that somewhat overlaps with the letter to you guys. So as you say, the commission has two openings. Kelly McLennock and Alex Douse are stepping down at the end of their current terms now. We want to thank them for the great service to the town, and it was a pleasure working with them. Kelly will continue working with the commission on land management and budget issues. For the last couple of months, the commission has advertised the openings and held interviews. It was nice that the commission had a number of interested candidates and three experienced ones went through the final interview process, the three that you just listed, Cindy, Courtney, and Peter. After the commission discussions, and as in our letter to, to the select board, the commission voted unanimously to recommend Courtney Eck and Cindy Ostrowski for the full three-year appointments to the commission. Courtney, some of this is in the letter too, but Courtney was act, has been actively participating with the commission for nearly two, two years now. She's attended nearly all the meetings and many site visits and helped out on open space activities. She's provided useful contributions to our work. She has regulatory-related experience in her own work as a clinical veterinarian. Cindy has also participated in some of our open space activities and brings past experience on another conservation commission in Mansfield and was part of a land trust there. She's also serving as the current treasurer of the Sherborne Forest and Trails Association, a group that the commission collaborates routinely with and has been very supportive of open space in town in both time and effort, as well as supporting some of our projects financially. She has a management background and experience. We welcome Peter, who also applied to continue to help out and work with the commission. We generally had a number of town residents who actively participate in our meetings and activities, whether they're an associate or not, or open to that, either way, people do it in varying manners. So to just be brief in closing, we respectfully request that the select board appoint Courtney and Cindy to the three-year terms. Both will add value to the commission and serve the town well in what we do.
Terrific. Before I open it up here, I went to several conservation committee, commission meetings this year and echo what you said about Kelly and Alex. I thought they were just terrific. It added real value to the, to the deliberation. Peter, as I understand it, there's a, there's a scheduling issue, as the current members of the Board of Health know, the, being a, on, on the Board of Health is a tough job, and Peter did it diligently and well, and I have a lot of respect for what he did there. Did you consider the possibility, and Peter, are you interested in being an associate member of the? Please.
Michael spoke to the credentials and capabilities of the other candidates, but this is your decision to make, and he did not speak to any of mine. I find that unfortunate. This, this decision is made by the selectmen to staff a volunteer board. And as, this has happened in the past, I know it happened to Susie Tyler, that when she was an applicant, she never even, in fact, got it even mentioned in the selectmen's meeting, so I appreciate being mentioned in the selectmen's meeting. And yes, I do want to be considered. However, I have a conflict. It's not a nothing, I mean, I'm totally credentialed and I'm totally capable and, and my background, you know, so I'm not even going to go into it, but I'm certainly qualified to serve on the Conservation Commission. But I have a decision to make, and that is, do I, in fact, if I get appointed to the Conservation Commission, do I ask the commission to change the meeting date? Because Thursday nights are choir nights for churches, and I have two and a half hours of choir practice. Do I want to give up two and a half hours of choir practice for four-hour regular meetings with the Conservation Commission? And frankly, the answer is no, I don't. Is there a likelihood that the Conservation Commission would change their meeting date from Thursday night to Tuesday night or Monday night? Probably not. I mean, I'm one person and there are six people, so respectfully, I'm going to be withdrawing my consideration for the position from your, your decision, because I just don't see how it could practically work out. However, I do want to stress that on a qualified basis, on a matter of qualifications, willingness to serve and ability to serve, ability to serve meaning to keep an open mind, to have a logical process in mind when considering what's going on, and also to run, you know, efficient, tight meetings and have the experience to know regulations and how to interpret and how to apply regulations. That's all there. And I think those credentials should be applied to anybody who applies, all right? And that if there are multiple candidates, then all, all multiple candidates should be presented to you for consideration, which is why I've chosen to take the mic, and thank you for your time. I am withdrawing.
Chuck, I have a question. Just as a fairly new member of the select board and, and appointing these commissions, I would just like, just, I don't have a lot of information about, how many members are there of the, because there's associate members and there's voting members.
Seven.
There's.
Seven voting.
Seven voting members of the Conservation Commission? Okay.
Right, seven. And there, there are some associates, but there's little, it's not like the planning board, the associate members, there's no real formal legal basis for that kind of thing.
They just kind of help you with.
So therefore, it's more a matter of, to be honest, if people help us, and a lot of people help us who are in associates, there's really relatively little status to being an associate.
I just wanted to learn a little bit about.
Oh, yeah, no, it's not like the planning board and others where they have a real.
Yeah, in my view, it's always been, it's very helpful in terms of broadening the expertise and the representation of, of these important committees.
It is, because I think all the committees should have a broad perspective on them of diverse perspective, not just, not just one viewpoint. I think that's very important.
David, were these positions advertised through our usual process?
They were properly advertised for at least 30 days.
Okay.
And all applicants, all applications were turned over to the selectmen in the packet.
And I, I was curious, it may be a moot point now, do you have any civil engineers or other people with that skill set on the commission now?
Oh, civil engineers? Nobody's an engineer on the commission.
Have you tried to recruit people with that kind of a technical background from the engineering standpoint?
Not from the engineer.
Or any, anything from that standpoint?
Well, some people have, I mean, it's more a scientific issue. A lot of the wetlands issues, I'll, I'll say, are more of a scientific nature than particularly an engineering.
That's not really true, Michael, because it deals with, you're dealing with development, so having somebody on the commission who at least understands development and, and the technical aspects of engineering, I think would be valuable.
Oh, then I'll throw myself in. I mean, I've done real estate development myself, and I can handle technical matters.
Destructions and things like that.
Yes, I've done some of that, but not as a formal training, but I say that I bring some of that sensitivity to issues. I mean, to me, it's an issue of the fact that, right, I view my responsibility giving permitting and time is money and how, and how developers have to work and operate that. I reflect that issue as well as.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not thinking, I'm not thinking about it from the standpoint of an open mind or appreciating the issues, I'm thinking of it from the standpoint of the knowledge and experience with that particular discipline. And so I think, I just would urge you to, to think about that, if positions open up, that you would have more of a broad-based skill set within that commission too. Your commission does very important work. I've been in front of a lot of conservation commissions. You know, it's, it's good to have diversity within the board in terms of those kinds of skill sets, as well as the people who understand the regulation or the policy or the science or, you know, the, the health or anything else.
Point, point taken and accepted.
Okay. Anybody else?
Terrific. Do I have a motion?
Move to appoint the remaining candidates.
Why don't we say their names?
It's a complicated name.
One only has two letters, Paul. Yeah, I'll do the first one for you. Courtney Eck. And Cindy, the name I butchered, Cindy Ostrowski.
I'll second the motion, Chuck.
Should we, I think they're both here. Do you just want to?
Oh, yes.
Say your name.
Yes. Yes, Courtney, yes, Courtney is there still.
Before we vote, I should disclose that I'm town councilor of town of Mansfield and have done that for a number of years, but your service on the Mansfield Conservation Commission predates my representation of the Conservation Commission, so I never actually represented you in any particular matter, so I'm eligible to vote.
I'll second Paul's.
Wait, any other further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much, and I apologize, Peter, for not appropriately saying your qualifications out there.
You know, I'm much happier to second myself.
Okay, I guess I should have coordinated with you.
Terrific. Misplaced the agenda, I think our next item.
Can I just say thank you to the people who stepped forward to do this? All three, but also the, the two folks who are going to serve? Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you also to the two who had served and are stepping, stepping down.
Yeah, unfortunately, one of them is standing as an associate because Kelly's.
Yeah, unfortunately, one of them is standing as an associate because Kelly is critical.
Yeah, he's the administrator. Terrific. Next item on the agenda is the, is there a town administrator report?
Yep, just quickly, the police station H-Vet project has been completed. That's we've been looking at that for a year, or a year and a half or so. And we also received a Green Communities grant in the amount of $39,126, and are working with Gino to have the grant money released now that the project has been completed, so that would take $39,000 off the $150 price tag of the whole thing. Also, the Recycling Committee is seeking permission from the Select Board to include a stuffer, a flyer, in the tax bill mailing. And Nancy usually comes in during a public comment and requests permission for that. So I'm just asking for permission to
Is Nancy okay with it?
Yes, yeah, it came from Nancy, I'm sorry.
Move approval.
And it is a formality that it has to be approved by the board.
Second.
We've approved these in the past that have been well-received by the
We can usually get about five minutes of debate out of it though, Paul, if we want to.
If they wanna try.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd actually like to spend 30 seconds and read it. Was this in the original packet, or was that
It's on the food waste drop-off at the transfer station.
Here it is.
It's information about the food waste collection program.
Yeah, when I was on the Recycling Committee, I was in favor of a pay-as-you-throw system where the recycling goes up sky-high when people actually have to pay to
But recycling costs us more right now.
The cost of not recycling.
Do we have a number, is there a number of like, what are basically average disposals per capita? Because I know the environmental bond bill had some numbers, I was gonna cap it by 2020.
I would have to look up one of those annual reports.
This flyer says that 36 tons was diverted, 30% of the total flow.
For food waste.
Yeah, and that's the food waste program.
Not the recycling.
Terrific. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I knew you'd get a The other item was the Planning Board hosted the final presentation of the Hazard Mitigation Plan on July 10th. MAPC made a 20-minute presentation there, and the final presentation is the last step to get the plan approval from MEMA and FEMA sometime in the fall. We'll ask Gino to come in and finalize that with you. That's it.
Can I ask you, David, as part of the Selectman Reports, have you had a chance to follow up with NADIC on that development issue that we talked about at the last meeting?
With NADIC?
Yeah.
No, no, I haven't had anything happen since
Well, it's not, it's not happened, it was just that road issue, just to make sure that they're aware of our concern about it, and that, and then things don't start to happen without us finding out about it.
Right, they have a new administrator, and I have a note that I want to talk to her about it, and just so it's on her radar. And I've been out since the last meeting.
No, it's fine, I just wanted to keep it on your radar screen.
Yes, thank you.
On a big picture, it's interesting, there's new assisted living facilities going up in Framingham, NADIC, and potentially Sherburne now.
Yeah.
It's a hot thing.
We are aging.
I'll get
They said, I've actually working in real estate, somebody had asked me about about assisted living in the area, because from what I heard in that industry, they targeted the population where Sherburne is kind of right in the center of it, and the lack of assisted living facilities in the immediate area, based on the circle of population right around here. That's why they had identified the Windy Low property, because it was right there, and now Sherburne's another obvious location. According to their studies in that industry, I don't know much about the assisted living industry, but
I haven't checked the stats in years, but for a while. Sherburne's had the highest average age per capita in the region.
But I don't think it's the population of Sherburne that's really affecting that. I think it's the towns around us, and we happen to be in the middle of much larger populated towns.
Terrific. Any Selectman Reports?
Yes.
Yes.
So I'm helping to put on a presentation for all selectmen on an issue that I cordially want to invite everybody of this board, and we've invited all the selectmen of the state, all 1,180 of them, to attend, and that's a program entitled Me Too in Town Hall. A Selectman's Role in Creating a Respectful Workplace. And we have several experts who are gonna be speaking on it, including an organization called Discrimination and Harassment Solutions, who's been very effective in training elected and appointed officials across the state. It's something we think that every selectman should be aware of, and should be sensitized towards, no matter what our respective backgrounds are, and what our knowledge and familiarity is with these kinds of issues. The idea is to, for all municipalities, to address and keep in mind the need for a respectful workplace in all town halls and city halls across the state. So this is, the program is free. It's a sort of a training program. We're thinking about at some point making it mandatory for everybody statewide, but in the meantime, it's entirely voluntary. And we'd urge you all to attend.
When is it and how's it conducted?
It's on Thursday. Thursday the 12th at 4:00 at a place in Plymouth, I can tell you.
That's Thursday tomorrow.
Yes.
You said it's through MMA?
It's through the MMA.
On MMA's webpage, we'll have it.
Yes, and everybody has been sent at least three emails on this, or at least they were supposed to get three emails on this over the last
I've gotten at least three, I'm sure. Honestly, I've seen, I've seen that. I didn't know of your involvement, but I've seen the emails, so they are getting out.
Yeah, as I say, we think it's really important to to sensitize, and all of us should be leaders on issues like this, and all 1,180 of us who are selectmen across the state should be leaders on this issue, and you never know when an issue might come up in any town hall across the state. I'm not saying that there's an issue here in Sherburne. This isn't about Sherburne, this is about 351 cities and towns. But you never know when an issue might come up, and we as selectmen across the state need to know how to deal with it, and how to be sensitized towards finding solutions. So that's my report.
Can I just add something to that? The the Personnel Admin Plan has the section on the harassment and what the process is for handling one of those complaints, and at what point it goes to the selectmen. It's in there. We updated the language.
We looked at that last year, didn't we?
Yep.
Did anyone else get emails about this training session? Because I don't
I don't think, I don't
I don't recall
I did.
Getting it. It may have gotten sent to you as the chair or the past chair.
I just know of it from MMA, to be honest.
I think I'm on the, no, I think I'm on the MMA It's Mass Selectment Association, isn't it, Paul?
Yes, well, we're trying to get everybody's emails, and to keep them up to date and so on. And it's not an easy job to do, because there's 1,180 of them, and some people don't continue on the board, so we have people who are dead getting emails.
I just learned I have to update my spam filter, is what it is. So I have been getting them.
Mark Brandon's probably on the list. Terrific. Any other reports? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Terrific.